Welcome, everybody here tonight. I now call the meeting to order. The first thing is the fire exits. Is there an emergency? The fire exits are over there, there, at the back. And we must be near the bank or beyond where the bank is. Can you turn your phones off, everyone? Okay. And the meeting is now recorded. We're here tonight for the annual town meeting of the local government electors of our town. This is not a council meeting, but an annual town meeting. Members of the public and press are welcome to this meeting, but the only persons entitled to speak and vote are those persons registered as local government electors for the town of Downham Market. The purpose of this meeting is so that electors can have their say on anything they consider is important to the people of the town. Any elector may also make suggestions and comments on anything pertinent to the people of Downham Market. This is much welcomed and is the whole purpose of this meeting. I'll run through the agenda. The agenda will be: Number two, to sign the minutes of the town meeting held on Wednesday 24th of May 2023; number three, to receive a presentation from charities and community groups; number four, to receive any updates from town, borough and county councillors; number five, local electors to raise pertinent local topics for debate. Equal time allowed for each topic, about five minutes. Local elects; number six, local electors to vote on which pertinent local topic the town council should consider during the ensuing municipal years. Can I have a proposal for last year's minutes? Secundar? Ross Secundar? Michael. All those in favour? Any against? I'll sign the minutes then. Move on then to item three, to receive a presentation from charities and community groups. Melody All Sorts, Carrie Anne Lister.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, please.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Anne. I am the chair of Melody All Sorts of Downham. We are an amateur dramatic group that resides in Downham. We perform on the stage here in the town hall. We are only young. We are a year old this year. But in that year, we have done two musical theatre evenings and a panto this January. We've had really good success with our numbers increasing by forty percent this January alone. We are a group that enjoy the stage and obviously want everyone to enjoy the stage, but we work with people with anxiety, disabilities, invisible or visible, to grow their confidence so they can perform, do solos, dance, whatever they want to do. And we do that by being inclusive and getting them to enjoy it rather than feel it's a forced thing. We saved two lives this fourth month from children that work with us who have high anxiety and are inclined to suicidal tendencies. We work with them so that they can build their confidence, be part of a group and be part of something that actually puts on a performance rather than just does something every week. We are working towards a show that will be in the festival week, so that's something that they're working on now. And we're just auditioning for a musical which will happen in October this year. It's been amazing, yeah, as a chair. It's been amazing to see people grow, develop, and our group grow in, you know, size and volume. But I would like to actually thank the town council staff, who have been amazing and so accommodating, the caretakers of the town hall, who were amazing when we had our panto this year, and to the mayor who attended almost every show that we did or function that we did, which to us means that we're supported, to our children, to our young adults. It means that we are supported not just by the community, but by the town council, and we love that this year. And we look forward to 2025, where our plans for our next panto and musical are already being made. I'd also like to thank the councillor Josie Ratcliffe, Joshua Osborne and Don Taylor, because they supported us financially with grants, community grants, which has been amazing, which helps us survive. The town council have helped us use the town hall for our bingo's, which are our fundraising means. And we are looking forward to 2024 and 2025. And we're very grateful for all the support that we've received. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I now call on Downham District branch, Royal British Legion?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, good evening, yeah. It hasn't been a tough day, that's what it is. I'm not going to go on about the history of the British Legion, because I'm sure you all know how the British Legion was formed and when it was formed. But I want to go to six facts of, you might not know, or up-to-date facts of the British Legion. So I've called it "Beyond the Poppy Appeal". From support and veterans and their families in debt, emergency situations to rehabilitation and housing, we provide vital support for armed forces and the community. The British Legion gives expert rehabilitation. We provide recovery, rehabilitation, support to currently serving, ex-serving personnel who are wounded, injured, sick. The same support is also available for those who are experiencing multiple challenges, such as being out of work, dealing with mental health problems, finance issues and alcohol abuse. The programme flagship is a £27 million battle back centre in Lillieshire in the West Midlands, some of you might have heard of it, which provides sport adventure activities designed to promote self-confidence and improve motivation and aid recovery. Seven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven wounded, injured or six-serving or ex-serving personnel have attended this battle back centre since the opening in 2009. Finding a new job or start a business. We offer a wide range of services designed to help ex-servicemen and women find employment. Our employment support services help service and ex-service personnel and their families prepare for employment as they transition into civilian life. Our team can provide you advice on how to put your skills to good use and get best jobs for you or for the serviceman, or refer you to one of our partners for support. We can also supply funding for additional training, education through our employment grant scheme. Anyone planning to start a business will also be supported in their ambition. We provide guidance on business plans, finance, tax requirements. Specialist assistance is also available to put together a business plan, source funding and even find mentors. Housing and support advice. We understand how great the impact of having housing issues can be. We provide support and advice on a wide range of housing issues. We provide advice and support to those who are homeless or face becoming homeless. Our team will also provide advice and guidance how to make housing applications to your local authority and can support challenges to the statutory decisions on grant funding, housing allocation and eligibility. Help to live independently. Here we help support armed forces community to maintain their independence and stay safe in their own home. From small adaptions to installing personal arms, our support with funding for new equipment. We can help by, our teams are based across the UK, as well as home maintenance and repair. We can also provide support so that you can, that you and your loved ones can access and service services you might need. Dementia, a team of dementia nurses. In the UK today, one of six people over eighty have dementia. And by 2025, more than a million people could have the condition. Inevitably, former members and servicemen featuring in these figures. Last year, we provided nursing dementia care to seven hundred and ninety-three residents across our six care homes. We provided care in the shape of purpose-built dementia wings at four of our six residential homes in Somerset, Roerichshire, Norfolk and North Yorkshire. We also have a team of specialist abnormal nurses, developed in partnership with Dementia UK, who work in communities currently operating in Lancashire and West Midlands, Hampshire and Somerset. They offer specialist support, information and advice to families, carriers of people living with dementia within the armed forces community. Tackling money problems. The British Legion will help to ease the burden on financial pressures for thousands of servicing and ex-service personnel. The British Legion Financial Team provides specialist compensation, advice, help with debt and emergency situations and can support or support the service through grants and applications.
Can you wind it up? Your five minutes is up.
Our benefits and money advice team can help you manage your finance and also support you with your experience in financing problems. And if you are in need of urgent assistance, you can get through a temporary crisis or need help at home, we may be able to help. We're going. Thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-one last year were provided with thirty-seven thousand, about thirty-seven thousand people reverse expert guidance and support through our sixteen pop-in centres across the UK. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for that. West Norfolk Deaf Association, Saracax.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us along. I'm from West Norfolk Deaf Association. We're a local charity covering West Norfolk. We currently support over five thousand babies to elders with hearing loss across West Norfolk. That's our patch. We have lots of groups, we do lots of support. We have the Deaf Centre in Kings Lynn. And eight years ago, I opened up number eight, the old bookshop. This also houses a hearing support centre for those with NHS hearing aids. I can give advice on any type of hearing loss, what's happening, advice on equipment. I also run a chat club in Downham Market, which is for people with an acquired hearing loss, so those who have lost their hearing over the period of their lives. One in five of us has a hearing loss. We start to lose our hearing at forty-seven, so that's pretty young. Most people are shocked by that. And like with the dementia issues going on, we know that those that have a significant loss that don't wear amplification are fifty percent more likely to get dementia. So our work is really, really important to get those people using that amplification. I'm a really optimistic person. Since having a shop in Downham Market, I've seen Downham grow. And I think we're in an absolutely fabulous position, probably better than we've ever had. We've got amazing independent shops. And I took some time this afternoon to just think about what shopping local means. I mean, in lockdown, I think we all suffered that real need to go to a physical shop. And I think, hopefully, it kind of showed to lots of us that we really don't want to lose local shops. So shopping local boosts the local economy. Research shows that ten pounds spent in an independent shop can mean an additional fifty pounds going back into the local economy. It creates jobs, it builds community and the character of the community, which something Downham really sort of has a lot of good stuff happening. It's got, you know, people have local knowledge, they can give you more support, they give a personal touch and obviously it's sustainable, cuts down on the air miles and improves the carbon footprints. So very quickly, at number eight, we do offer the hearing support service, but it's set up as an independent bookshop, standalone bookshop. Last September, we launched the first Downham Market Word Fest, which is a literary festival. It's not a highbrow festival. There's something for everyone, from children's storytelling to author events. We have regular bookish quiz nights here in the town hall that have been really successful and sold out. Number eight has its own book group. We have a British Sign Language Practice Club. We hire out two authors that can hire the space to do their own book launches. Next week, I've got a ghost hunter group coming in, so it's always available to hire. I do see it as, hopefully, a bit of a community hub. We've got lots of fringe events planned for Word Fest over the coming year. This Saturday, we have an amazing new author. She's very, very going to be a big, big author. Pam McMillan are pushing her books out everywhere. And we have her here in the town hall this Saturday morning. We've got tickets available still, you can turn up on the door. This September, we're going to offer a whole week again of Word Fest week, and there'll be a murder mystery evening, author events, storytelling for little ones. We're going to try a speed scrabble evening. We're going to have a poetry open mic. And throughout the week, we'll be doing bookish crafts. So to round it up, I hope that, you know, that you'll join us firstly for that, but also to really like drive home the shop local. I think that Downham has really, really grown and I'm actually really proud to be part of it, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Discover Downham.
Could you tell me when my five minutes are up? Because we're very busy at Discover Downham. We've got an awful lot of things. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, most of you are aware of Discover Downham, our location and our presence in Downham Market. We're in the old fire station in Priory Road. And luckily, many intrepid visitors managed to find us, though many locals seem blissfully unaware of us. We have a hundred and three members and would like to expand, obviously. I've brought some membership forms along, if anybody would like to take one. We have forty-two volunteers. I'm a volunteer, Diane Drewy is my name, and I'm a trustee also. It's completely dependent upon volunteers and we always need more stewards. So if anybody would like to become a steward, please come and see me. Events are run regularly to fulfil our role in making our local history accessible to all and involving our community. And as an entirely self-supporting organisation, these generate funds to cover our considerable overheads. We're happy to report that this year, in spite of all the expenditure, we're on track to balance the books for the second year in a row. We run lots of free events and activities for the community too. We have our monthly fundraising events, monthly coffee mornings every last Friday of the month. We have quizzes every first Wednesday of the month. And these provide an opportunity for people to come together and socialise and to both really popular. We hold monthly talks, which can be informative or entertaining, sometimes both, with historical topics ranging from industrial activity in nineteenth century Norfolk and its market towns to More Deadly Than the Male, a lighthearted history of the female Gothic. So very eclectic mix. We have tabletop sales, next one the twenty-eighth of April, nine thirty to twelve, and it's six pound a table if anybody's interested. We have antique valuation days and this year a new departure bingo held at Denver Village Hall, because they have more capacity than we do. We hire out Discover Downham to various clubs, groups and societies and individuals who wish to use the space. All of our hirers are attracted by the excellent facilities provided, including a separate kitchen and craft sinks, the interactive screen, also the fully accessible free wifi sound system, hearing loop. Our hirers include songwriters and poets, historic churches, sitfit, women's menopause education, amateur dramatic groups, film groups, photographic club, art classes, et cetera. We run workshops for adults and children. I won't go into detail because of the time. We have an ongoing research facility for anybody who wishes, especially if they wish to look into genealogy. We have facilities for this. We have regular once-a-month family history sessions where our volunteers assist visitors who wish to generate family trees, for example. This is two pound a session, including refreshments. Visitors can also make use of our small lending and reference library, computers and maps for research. It's very important to give back to the community, so we have a community outreach project, lots of interaction with local schools, colleges, scouts and guide groups. Children's groups are vital. We have to involve local children. Okay, right. So very, very quickly, we would, our plans are basically to make our building more energy efficient and improve all areas of our work. And I hope to see you all at Discover Downham soon.
Thank you very much for that. Downham Market Festival Committee.
Good evening, everybody. I haven't brought my glasses with me. Right. I'm Denise Wiley, the chair of the festival committee. We now, this year is the first time we've ever had a full committee, which makes such a difference to us. We're working together on Festival 2024 at the moment, which will be May the twenty-fifth, no, if not the twenty-sixth, until June the first. Bookings are ongoing. And if anyone here this evening is thinking of having a float in the parade or a stall on the Howdout, please see me afterwards. The carnival offers everybody a good time, free entertainment, a variety of stalls, food and drink choices and lively arena events. A good day is guaranteed. May the sun shine on us, please. During the rest of the week, we have various events in the town hall, courtesy of the town council, thank you. So when you get this year's programme, please look through and book from it. This year, with the help of Lime Tree Printing, we're producing ourselves. And there will be no prizes for finding howlers, spelling mistakes, et cetera. Please support us and our town. Let's make visitors welcome and make 2024 the festival of festivals. I'll also point out that we are self-funding. We have various fundraising events during the year and would ask, and we do ask for grants when they might be available. I can't read the rest of it because it's my own writing now, can I? No, it's all right. I've only got two more bits to read and I can't read what they are. But never mind. Please be here for us for the festival, because we do it for the town, which we absolutely love. And we've got a lovely committee. We like to support Downham and we'd like you to support us, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Downham Market Twinning Club.
Hello, everybody. I'm Chris Nunn, chair of the Downham Market Twinning Club. So to start with, just a brief history. In nineteen seventy-six, the charters were signed by Mayor's Tinker Taylor for Downham Market, Aral Carteroo for Sivray. Since then, many people of all ages and walks of life have travelled to and from Sivray. Sivray is situated thirty miles south of Poitiers. And Sivray is a small town just off the A ten Bordeaux road. The town has several historic buildings, including the twelfth-century Remus Church of St Nicholas, which dominates the lovely marketplace. A particularly beautiful aspect of the town is the River Cheron. Like Downham, they have a twice-weekly market in Sivray. The Twinning Club helps establish mutual understanding between the two countries by showing visits between the two towns. While some of our visits and events have cultural and educational aspects, there is a considerable emphasis on socialising and fun. Speaking French is not essential, as many of our French friends speak English. We welcome all ages and many members have joined exchanges, not only with the club but independently as well. Last summer, the Sivray Club would have been visited in Downham, but unfortunately, they continued to experience difficulties due to having only a small committee to organise a visit and they were not able to come. Friendships are established with hosts and even though there was not an official visit this summer, the link between our two towns continues. We had an invite from a couple who we had hosted on a few occasions to visit Sivray independently. And in July, we travelled to Sivray for a five-day stay. It was an enjoyable visit and especially pleasing when walking around Sivray Market to be greeted by people we knew. We learnt that there was someone who was interested in taking the president role, but not until December, when they would be retiring. We have not heard from Sivray Club, but the letter has been sent to the mayor of Sivray, Emmanuel Brunet, with an invitation to the Sivray Club to visit Downham this year. Locally, as a club, we enjoy a variety of monthly social events. And again, this year, there will be the usual French star café in the town hall on the Sunday of festival week. And we have a website, which will be more information on the Twinning Club, which is downhammarkettwinningclub.com. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The Men's Shed, Martin Sharp, yes?
Before the timekeeper starts his timekeeping, I'd like to make a quick apology, ladies and gentlemen. I was working on this up until shortly before I came out this evening. And to my horror, when I actually read through it, I realised how long it was going in for. So it's been dramatically culled. And trying to read through it at the back, I've realised that it doesn't make an awful lot of sense. It made sense before I cut it about, but... Please be patient with me and I'll do the best I can and... Please be patient with me, and I'll do the best I can and see how we go. The Men's Shed, the forerunner for it, started off in Australia in a place called Broken Hill in the nineteen eighties in New South Wales, Australia. A group of miners that were retired and injured and couldn't work got together and they decided that they would form an association and they would have their own shed. And this spread throughout the world to more than a dozen countries. And the first country in the northern hemisphere to have a shed was in Northern Ireland. And it's slowly expanded to the UK. At the moment, we have over three hundred sheds. Our shed first, the idea of it first started when we had a meeting in two thousand and eighteen in March at the Downham Market Library. And each shed has got a unique, and each shed is unique in its own right, and there are no two sheds that are truly alike. There isn't a simple template or model on which men's sheds are based. Each one develops its own identity according to the aims, objectives and wishes of its members. At our shed, we aim to provide a safe, friendly, regular meeting place where members over eighteen are very welcome. We're fully inclusive, although comprising mainly of older men, for obvious reasons. We have a lady member, we have disabled members. We meet, chat, eat tea, drink coffee and tea, eat biscuits and socialise, and it's a way of making new friendships and helping people avoid social isolation. Our shed is a registered charity, and it's evolved to mainly undertake woodworking using an extensive range of hand tools and machinery. We currently meet every Monday and Wednesday from nine AM till about twelve to twelve-thirty, depending for some whether people have got projects that they wish to complete. And when our membership increases, we'll consider opening on additional days and times. When initially discussing how to create our own men's shed, we hired a room at the Swan Centre, later moving on to the Eternity Church, who kindly allowed us to use their facilities without charge. In November two thousand and eighteen, we were fortunate to source a second-hand porter cabin that required renovating, that was funded by Downham Market Club forty-one. The Eternity Church allowed us to use the porter cabin in their grounds on a long lease and have continued to be supportive of our aims, although we are not connected or affiliated with them in any way. Unfortunately, we quickly outgrew our porter cabin and, following the Hillcrest School moving out of their temporary classrooms and into the new technical wing in two thousand and nineteen, I approached the school and the Headmaster and Norfolk County Council, and they very kindly agreed that they would donate one of their redundant classrooms along with the disabled ramps for our use. They also paid for them to be delivered to us and installed. With funding, we've received several grants of help from different organisations. Clearly, with a time limit, I'm now not going to go through them all. Downham Market Town Council very kindly provided us with a grant of a thousand pounds, which enabled us to get the temporary overground toilet waste pipe, which was dangerous, professionally laid underground. This also allowed us to get the disabled ramp extended, and we are converting the toilet to become disabled trendly. We're undertaking the disabled toilet conversion and refurbishment ourselves, which is now nearing completion. Joshua Osborne, one of the Borough Councilors, recently visited our shed and appeared to be interested and supportive in what we were trying to achieve. We've recently purchased some racking on eBay to install between the porter cabin and the main classroom. The idea being that we're going to be able to remove the timber from the porter cabin, which at the moment, you can't get to have your tea and your coffee, and clearly, the access to the toilet is very difficult. Yeah, before we move back into the porter cabin for our tea and coffee, we need to get the roof sorted. Sorry, I've got my notes. That's what I said, I've cut and pasted, not cut and pasted, I've just taken huge chunks out of it, it doesn't make sense. We're seeking funding solutions to help with the roof repairs and bridging the gap between the porter cabin and the workshop, and also to install extractor fans with appropriate ducting in the workshop. Any helpful suggestions would be most welcome. Activities, we make various items to sell and donate to other charities and organisations. Our produce includes garden benches, wheelbarrows, bird boxes, some of which have been donated to the Salvation Army for their gardens, bat boxes, owl boxes, etc. And hedgehog houses have been donated to Rachel's, Riston Rachel's Hedgehog Hotel. We regularly engage in litter picks in and around the Willows, Trafalgar Industrial Estate and the local area. We attend various craft fairs to promote our shed and sell some of our product, produce, hopefully. With the exception of Covid, weather permitting, we hold an open day and barbecues in July to coincide with the shed's AGM. Organised visits to various places of interest, including French and Forge, Marham RAF Museum, Norfolk Tank Museum, and a future visit is currently planned to visit the Duxford Museum. We also have Christmas meals and other meals and other social activities. There is a folder that I...
Long five minutes.
Sorry?
Long five minutes, carry on.
No, I was just going to say that I've got a folder, and rather than sort of rambling on, if anybody has any questions, I'd be pleased to try and answer them, and I've got some leaflets as well that we can hand out.
Thank you, Martin. Thanks a lot for that. He's doing well. We'll move on then to item four, which is to receive updates from Town, Borough and County councillors. Have we got a county councillor? Borough councillor? Any borough councillors?
Do you want to speak?
No, we've got a couple of town councillors.
Andy Bullen wants to speak.
Oh, Andy, sorry.
Do you want to speak?
Sorry, thank you, good evening. Wonderful to see so many people here, and thank you very much to the Town Council for organising the annual meeting. My name's Andy Bullen, I'm the Borough Councillor for North Downham Ward. Just a quick update about what I've been doing and what I do. I sit on the Environment and Community Panel of the Borough Council. I sit on a biodiversity task group. I'm also trustee of the Swan Project. While I mention the Swan Project, you may all know of Love Downham, which is on Bridge Street. I'd encourage you all to visit, please, it is a community shop, so you're all welcome. It's for everybody, I shop in there. And it's vital to keep the produce turning over, and we also have clothing as well. I support various organisations. One of them is Downham Market Wildlife Group. We recently had an event, Wild Downham, in the town hall here, which will be held annually, I hope. I think we've arranged next year, but I may have to get in touch with Tina and Claire. I also support the Macular Society. I don't know whether Mary's here, I haven't seen her yet. And one thing I have been trying to do within the Borough Council, you probably realise there's a new administration from last May, independent administration. I've been trying to raise awareness of Downham Market. I invited all the Cabinet members to come down to Downham. We've had the leader address the Town Council, we've had the business Cabinet member, and we've had others coming down here. We arranged a business meeting about a month ago. That's a regular meeting we want to encourage, and the next one will be in connection with tourism. The two main focuses I have are young people and the elderly. I think that's, you know, stating obviously the most important elements of our community. But listening to everyone else speaking today, I think Downham Market's going through a period of change, but I think it's all very positive. I'm very, very positive about the future of the town. I think we're very fortunate, I've been living here for ten years, and I like to think I'm part of the community. And, you know, I just think all the presentations we had today reflect very well on what the town is and where it's going, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Andy. Councillor Inkovia.
Good evening, everyone. Mr Deputy Mayor, you won't need to time this, it's very short.
I'll keep it on.
You'll be pleased to know. I'm Anna Inkovia, I'm a Town Councillor, and I am also Chair of the Governance Committee. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the committee and what we do as members. Now, this was a newly formed committee last May, and our terms of reference include to establish and keep under review the legal requirements and constraints on the council, also to draft, recommend, review, monitor and revise policies, thus ensuring policy and procedure is compliant with legislation and best practice. To support this objective, over the past year, the committee members, together with the Town Clerk, have reviewed and updated nearly all existing policies and produced many new but essential ones. This adds up to over thirty policies and procedures recommended to and adopted by the full council, and there are still more to be reviewed. And I hope you will agree, this highlights the commitment of this council to have up-to-date policies in place, which underpin the decision-making process for all councillors on behalf of the town. Therefore, tonight, in the spirit of openness to the Downham Market community, I believe it's important to advise on the role of committee members at the governance meetings, especially as this was a newly formed committee. So from this very short briefing, I hope the remit and relevance of the committee is explained to you, the community. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you for that. Councillor Buxton.
Good evening, everyone. Rather short, so excuse, I'll try and bring it down. Height is not in my favour. Good evening, everyone, I am Councillor Ally Buxton. I am the Chair of the Community and Development Committee, and we thought it would be nice to summarise the council's achievements and the work that's taken place this year. We hope you'll agree that the following is something to be proud of and helps our community to develop, flourish and function better. It involves a lot of hard work throughout the year, so it is also to thank our members of staff in the office and the maintenance team for the work they've put in, alongside all the contractors who have worked with us to make this happen. So they go as follows: for the property committee, the town hall kitchen renovation, the transformation of Six Marketplace into Town Council offices, Jubilee Community Centre entrance road, Jubilee Community Centre service road, the Memorial Garden footpath, a new recycled bench at the Memorial Garden, the upgrade of the Town Council-owned street light into LED, the resurfacing and relining of Privy Road car park, the creation of parent and child bay and drop-off bay on the town hall car park, installation of Blood Loss Kid, which was kindly sponsored by Joan Crivett in memory of her partner Chris, installation of the heritage signage throughout the town, those are the green plaques that you see, toilet upgrade on the town hall car park, due to be completed by the Borough Councillor Kingsland in West Norfolk in twenty twenty-four, following liaison through the Town Council, CCTV at the Jubilee Community Centre, CCTV at the town hall, an upgrade to the heating system in the town hall to make the building more environmentally efficient, upgrade to the Jubilee Community Centre windows and doors to make the building more efficient and accessible. Downham in Bloom, they rewarded a silver gilt this year by Anglia in Bloom. They're holding an Earth Day at Nelson and Academy School on the twentieth of April. Downham in Bloom will be attending. Working with the property committee to help develop the Jubilee Community Centre. Hillcrest Privy School received first place for their seed tray inter-school competition that Downham in Bloom arranged. Downham in Bloom then entered this in the under-twelve category of the entry in Anglia Bloom, and this year received a certificate of nomination for this category. Downham Market Wombler's, organised by Downham in Bloom, a litter pick of which will next be taking place on Sunday, the fourteenth of April. The local community, working with the College of West Anglia to provide a work experience placement, grants to Men's Shed, the Scouts and Guides, Christmas Lights Limited and Downham Stow Cricket Club. Community and Development Committee, an extended pause-and-remember event where two local schoolchildren read poems, a well-attended and successful Christmas lights switch-on event with a free Santa, a free Halloween event, a community cinema for the summer holidays, Halloween and Easter, which included Witchfinder General, A Man Called Otto, Marcel the Shell with Shoes On, Strange World, Matilda the Musical, Hop, Mrs Harris Goes to Paris, all of which were free. The Community Fair, working with the Borough Tourism Officer on improving tourism information and attracting visitors to the town. Event to celebrate the coronation of His Majesty King Charles III, including a best-dressed window and cake competition. Bingos, quizzes and coffee mornings to raise money for the mayor's charity, the East Anglian Air Ambulance, which has so far raised one thousand two hundred and twenty pounds. And future events include St Wynold's Parade, which will be held on the twenty-second of March, a D-Day commemoration event on the sixth of June, which is currently in the stages of planning. And finally, in business, we've had a successful business meeting with the mayor and the Borough Councillor Kingsland in West Norfolk, which was mentioned earlier, and a continuing network events in conjunction with Mapas, Smith and Lemon. And thank you very much.
Thank you for that. We'll move on then to item five, local electors to raise pertinent topics. Five minutes allowed. Anyone want to raise any topics?
Yes, I do.
Go on then. Can you come up and...
Yes.
Five minutes allowed.
So I want to talk about the pay parking in Downham, and what it will do to the town, and what it will do to the businesses in town and the people that won't come in, which we know this because we've spoken to many on the markets, and they've said they won't travel into Downham if they're in between Kingslin and they're in between Downham or Swaffham, they'll go elsewhere, they won't come here. We've spoken to the market lady today at Brandon, and she runs several markets, bearing, Barrett and Edmund's been one of them. Barrett and Edmund's traders said their trade is down by half because of pay parking in the town. Ely bought in pay parking, it didn't work, it nearly killed the town, so they had to revert back to free parking, and they had to put signs up every which way into Ely to save free parking. So I'm here to say that we don't want it in this town. We don't want pay parking in this town. We don't want to kill the shops in this town. We like it the way it is, people come, they spend, and that's the way it should be. We've got new businesses in this town that have put thousands of pounds into shops, empty shops, and they're still coming to fill up empty shops. And you want to bring pay parking into this town and you want to kill them? No, we're not for that at all.
Any other topics? Is there one here? This one there, just come. Okay, we've got one. Five minutes.
I've actually got, it's only...
Is the microphone?
Three questions, you're not standing near it. So I think my first two are probably for the Borough Council. Does the memorial field come under the Borough Council? Yeah? You mean a dog mess? Can nothing be more active about it, being improved?
Can you speak into the microphone so everyone can hear?
For the children playing on the memorial field at the moment, it is pretty disgusting. I believe there is still a dog warden in the county somewhere. No? You'll bring it up. The other thing is the wall's beginning to collapse again. I noticed as I was walking along there the other week. That's being looked into? Brilliant. And my last point is for the Downham Council about supporting the football in this town. I do believe that our Downham Town players are an inspiration for the younger people, and I do think that it'd be nice if we could hear from the council to support them in getting the planning permissions they need to go forward.
Is there someone else? Pam Sharp?
I've actually got two, I've actually got two questions, if that's allowed, is that okay?
You've got five minutes, do we allow you?
All right, okay.
Can you speak into the mic so that everyone can hear?
I was getting permission first, right. Right, so first of all, it's really to, is to do with the thirty-seven bus timetable, which is, the bus thirty-seven is very well used, as are the other local come-to-town buses. But I'd like to, there's a two-hour gap, over a two-hour gap, in the middle of the day, or from two o'clock till about four o'clock, where no buses are running at all. And I'd like, if it's possible, the Town Council to write a letter to Norfolk County Council. I did try and do so... Council, I did, and try and do something about this a while ago, but it sort of went off into buses around the town rather than the actual 37 and the route it's on. We don't have a bus at all on a Sunday, but Monday to Saturday, the last bus goes about twenty past five now, I'm a regular bus user, as I am with the trains, and what people are worried about is that they miss the last bus, so they get the bus beforehand and that coincides with the schools, with all sorts of people using the bus and it's so crowded, it's unbelievable. When we first moved here, which is about 24 years ago, we had a much later bus, we had, the gap during the day was only an hour. And to do with the levelling up budget, I believe this comes under, loads of places, especially in West Norfolk, have got extra buses. Hansstansens is about every quarter an hour, we have one an hour when we're lucky. So if it's possible, I would like the town council to write a letter or to support me, I'll write a letter as well and there are lots of people that use the bus, if you could do that, please.
There's a vote on item six, so... There'll be a vote on, anyway, go on.
Right, okay, so that's question one, I'm not going anywhere. The next thing is, again, for the whole town really, the so-called crossing junction, it isn't really a crossing, that's from Morrison's Car Park into Paradise Road, it's becoming increasingly dangerous for pedestrians and sometimes drivers who are pulling out when oncoming traffic does not display an indicator. And it's a blind spot when you want to cross the road. And within a very few yards of this particular junction, there's a chemist, there's a doctor's surgery, there's vets, there's a school back entrance to Nelson Academy, there's a main entrance to the preschool and the family centre. Unfortunately, there's no longer a lollipop lady. Also, there's the Swan Youth Centre, plus buses that are running backwards and forwards and lorries from Morrison's. And to add to the daily chaos, there are often speeding cars coming from both directions, the traffic lights and Nelson Avenue, which is a cut through to the station. So I do know that this question has been asked before several times and I've always asked for a crossing there of some sort, I realise you can't put traffic lights there because it's just, I actually think it's virtually impossible, but if the Norfolk County Council, the Borough Council, highways of Norfolk County Council, with support from councillors from Old Town and North wards especially, because it affects their areas particularly, and input from the town council, there used to be a road safety committee that I remember in the town, but unfortunately, I think this disbanded several years ago. So I hope that the previous two questions I've asked helped to stress that they are two important questions I consider for the town as a whole. And we are growing, we've nearly quadrupled in size, it's wonderful with all the shops, we're getting more tourists, but we need to keep it safe for people and to make it very welcoming with the buses as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Andy Bullen.
Sorry, back again, I'm here as an individual resident. I've floated the idea of a community speed watch team in the town before, but it never got anywhere and I wonder if there's any appetite, we need six people to run it, we need a leader and at least five other people. The police will support it, they'll provide all the training and all the equipment.
We move on to item six and there'll be proposals for whatever you want. Any other, anybody else want to speak? No? I'll move on then to item six, which is local electors to vote on which pertinent local topic the town council should consider during the ensuing municipal year. Now, I'll need a proposer and a seconder and then we'll vote on any topics you want to vote on. Any topics you want? Anything?
Yes, I would like to propose that we don't have any pay parking in the town.
You've got a proposer for that? A seconder? I've got a proposal and a seconder for that, but there'll be no... Okay. All those in favour of that proposal? Those against? I think that's carried. Any other proposals?
I'd like to propose that the request for something to be done about the buses should be considered, please.
You want more frequent buses? Is that it? You're proposing that there should be more frequent buses? So I've got a seconder for that, I've got a seconder over there. All those in favour? Those against? I think that's carried. Okay. Anything else? Someone at the back there?
Because it's the second point, how many will you be looking at?
Sorry?
How many of these propositions will you be looking at?
I can't hear you, sorry.
As well as you put forward, Pat. Right, okay. I mean, I can't promise we'll do it all in a year, but we will look at all the propositions and investigate. Okay, thank you. So I propose that we investigate a crossing from Morrison's.
Crossing in Morrison's.
From Morrison's across, yes.
So you're proposing that there should be a crossing in Morrison's, eh? From, to Paradise Road, is that it? Paradise Road. Paradise Road, crossing. Yeah? Well, I've got a proposal for that, there's a seconder. Seconder over there, all those in favour? I think that's pretty, I'll take that, it's carried. Any against? No, carried. Anything else? Well, that's about the end of the meeting then. There'll be no other business, I'll close the meeting then. Three minutes to seven.